Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 13th, 2019. Approve the council agenda? Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, councilor, I don't have any additions or corrections at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Implication, New Journey Church. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good.
Good.
We have some nice weather, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I just called at, what was it, about two o'clock and said, "Turn that around." I want to begin with a reading called Sailboats by Drew Ledger, Leader, excuse me. Imagine yourself a sailboat, not the pilot of the sailboat, skilled though she may be, but the sailboat itself on its wind-blown journey. You are solid. You must keep body and soul together even when buffeted by the wind and crashing seas. You do not have the luxury of fragility that is open to land-loving things. At the same time, your solidity must be wedded to a lightness and buoyancy that allows you to crest the waters. No heaviness here to drive you under. You must be lighthearted, like a child skipping down the street, free of the adult cares that cause the older step to grow slow and ponderous. Most of all, you must be receptive. Not even your lightness can drive you forward one whit, nor your solidity. You simply receive the wind's blessing. It takes you by the hand, now leads you forward, like a comforting companion, now pulls you along like an overeager child. It would have you go this way and that, reversing directions unexpectedly, then strangely, it grows becalmed. Do not seek to understand the wind's ways. It is a mystery to itself as much as to you. It is nothing other than self-discovery, born anew each moment in airy form. So you cannot predict it. You cannot control it. All you can do is receive. This is what your sails were made for, to delight in the call of the breezes. To do so, your sails must be strong and flexible, not fragile, ripped apart by an energetic gust, nor stiff and unyielding. They must flow with the wind until they are like wind itself, billowing and ripply. When the winds of change blow through our life, or the winds of spirit inspire us, there is nothing better than to be a sailboat. We must unfurl the canvas of the heart. We must not let that wind pass by, but quick, catch it, ride lightly in the breeze, go with the flow, and let it lead us across uncharted seas to that distant shore which is our home. If you are so inclined, would you please call to mind that deity, that entity, that you believe to be beyond all of us? Holy of holies, sometimes it feels like we have control of it all. Sometimes we think that the path in front of us is unchangeable, and then life happens. People offer a word that sends us in a new direction. Our course is forever changed by an act of nature. Open us to all the possibilities of life, not just those most obvious to us. Open us to the leading of collective wisdom, and unexpected gifts, and hidden paths around the challenges in front of us. With gratitude in our hearts for these servants of Hutchinson and the important work that they do, may we all lean into a collective wisdom which is greater than the wisdom of each one, so that we might create a thriving community where every resident is respected and finds opportunities to thrive. May it be so.
Next, the flagellative allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight?
Well, I think that we all should congratulate our new Aquatennial Princess, Ms. Westlin, Erin Westlin. What a proud and wonderful tribute to her and to her city that she represents. So, thanks.
Anything else? All right, we have a resolution under there, Resolution Number 15085, accepting donations from Friends of the Loose Line Trail for costs associated with the tree planting project along the loose-line state trail.
Mayor and council, we generously received a $1,500 donation to assist with tree planting.
So, as you recall, this was a partnership we did with the Snow Pros, and they had contributed something, I don't know, a couple of months ago, maybe. I noticed they planted them along the south side of Highway 7 around the second curve going east. Did they plant them any other place, or is it just that stretch?
Just that stretch for now, just to break it up from the highway, help hold snow in there for the snowmobiles, so.
So, there were quite a few trees they planted.
Forty-some altogether, I guess, so.
Well, we thank them for that. Have a motion to accept it.
I'll make a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to accept a donation from the Friends of the Loose Line. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Citizens addressing the city council. Anybody want to address the council? Just come forward and state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, Michael Mossman, Jewel Road, southwestern Hutchinson. Will you be receiving public comments during the discussion around the chicken ordinance?
I will be not taking any public comment.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have approval of minutes, meeting minutes of July 23rd, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Steve to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody wants to pull something off for discussion. A, approval of purchase of Creekside and Splendour Grove polybag film. B is approval of wastewater treatment facility ditch aeration project equipment procurement. C is approval of change order number one, letting number two, project number 19-2, South Grade Road corridor improvement. D is approval of amending board commission calendar for the public starts, mission meetings. E is approval of Resolution Number 15086, a resolution disposing of, at auction of surplus Public Works Department equipment. F is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the United Way on September 7th, 2019, at Roberts Park. And G is claims appropriation and contract payments, register A. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled off? Approved. Motion by Steve, second by Dave to approve consent agenda. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have approval of consent agenda number two, claims and appropriation contract payments, register B. Chad, I believe you have a check on there.
I do. I fixed some police bikes, so I will abstain.
All righty. Motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary to approve, with Chad abstaining. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We'd not have a public hearing, update and review of Minnesota Green Corps project.
Good evening, Mayor, council. As you very well know, the city of Hutchinson was selected to be a host site for the Minnesota Green Corps program for the 2018-2019 service year. Evan, our member, has been diligently working on minimizing the contamination in our source-separated organic materials that we receive and are from the curbside collection program throughout the city. So, with the program quickly coming to a close, it's an 11-month program where at about 10 and a half months, his last service day is August 27th, so two nights from, excuse me, two weeks from tonight, he would like to give a little review, a little update on his efforts here during his tenure with the city. So I will turn it over to him. See if I can get it there quick. Maybe.
As Andy said, I'm Evan Volmer. I'm a Minnesota Green Corps member, serving at Creekside this year. My service ends in two weeks, and so, just giving an update, a little review of my service year. So, to start, I completed a contamination audit of the source-separated organics for the fall of 2018, and then also the winter of 2018/19. So, in the fall, I found that there was roughly 1% contamination of the source-separated organics by weight, and then I also found that there was 2.3% food scraps in those organics, which could be improved if more people would utilize the compostable bio-bags for food scraps, as well as their household organics and yard waste. And then, in the winter, I found that because there was a lot less yard waste in the source-separated, there was over 4% contamination by weight. And the most common contamination that I've seen were plastic bags, plastic plant carriers, like little pots, glass and plastic bottles, cans, clothing, and then there was an overabundance of cardboard in the source-separated organics, which we will take the cardboard. It is technically compostable, although a large amount isn't very healthy for the compost, and that material, that clean cardboard, is more valuable in the recycling.
Isn't it correct, though, that the cardboard we're looking for, though, is the lighter-weight stuff, like the cereal boxes, pizza boxes, things like that, instead of heavier cardboard?
Right, correct. Yeah, yeah. Any pizza boxes, we will definitely take those, for the most part, are not recyclable because of the food residue that's on them, so we would rather to have them composted. And I've also kept an online presence for Creekside. I've created a couple Facebook posts throughout the year that I posted on the city's Facebook page to educate residents on common contaminants, or about how they can properly utilize their organics carts. And I focus them mainly around holidays, like Christmas, talking about, like, Christmas lights, or decorations, or wrapping, gift wrapping, kind of talking about those kind of contaminants that we often see during those times. And then I've also done a few posts educating about the yard waste that should be placed in the cart, as opposed to the bigger yard waste which should be brought directly to Creekside, along with a number of different food waste facts, the compostable bags, and then also the cardboard recycling. I also redesigned the composting page under the city's website to make it more relevant to all of the services that Creekside provides, and then also to change some of the language that, so it fit the Minnesota Composting Council standards a little bit better. So, I did a number of different educational, or made a different, number of different educational materials, like a updated composting organics guide that had a more detailed list than what we've had before of what you can or cannot put in your organics cart. I made a common holiday house, like, holiday household items list, and where those items should go, whether it's the trash, the compost bin, or the recyclable bin, and a number of different various letters that are to be sent out to residents in the future, or have already been sent out. I have also taken over sending contamination letters to residents, little notices about the contamination that we see in their carts, and a picture of that contamination, and then also my updated organics guide. And I've also taken over giving tours to those residents that have their cart taken away from them and are looking to get it back. They come to Creekside to get a tour of the facility, and then they can receive their cart again. I've also participated and helped out, present at the Nature Field Day at Pippinburg Regional Park, and I was at the composting recycling table, talking to kids about what we do at Creekside, and kind of educating them also on the contamination, what they shouldn't be putting in there. And then recently, I've also started a door-to-door campaign where I've located a specific portion of town that had the largest amount of contamination, and I started going door-to-door, handing out the organics guides that I created, and then talking them about contamination issue and things like that, and answering any questions that they might have at that time.
How'd that go?
It went well. It's going really well still. Everyone's pretty receptive to it, and had some positive responses. Through Creekside, I ordered 20, created 20 rolls of three-gallon compostable bio-bags, as opposed to the 13-gallon bags that we currently have, and this came with 20 free three-gallon buckets. And so, this was made with the idea that if residents start using these smaller buckets, it kind of, it kind of helps them realize that they can use it for fruit scraps. It doesn't look like a trash bin, so there won't be as much contamination in there. It'll increase the participation in organics and also decrease the contamination issue. So, through this, I contacted some of the residents that completed the survey back in January and left their emails, and then I've also contacted a few city employees who might be interested in it. There are currently actually eight buckets out right now, and one was returned because they thought they would rather use the 13-gallon bags rather than the three-gallon bags. It just works better for them personally. And I have also set up a few different recycling bins at the VMF Park during the high school baseball games, and then also the Hutch Huskies games. So, from that, throughout the summer, I've actually collected, now that the games are done there, I've got a final total which is actually 225 pounds of recycling. There was very, very little non-recyclables in those bins, so it was very clean material. The only issue at first was paper plates in one specific bin that was closest to the concession stand, although I changed the sign on that one to say no paper plates, and that seemed to fix the issue. I haven't seen a paper plate since that. And then also, like, little plastic tubes for, like, ice pops and fast boot cups. Those are the main, any kind of contamination that we see. And this has really helped significantly reduce the trash that's produced from that field, and this really, I feel like it helps the park staff as well, reduce the amount of times that they have to change the bags and service that field.
And this was just recycling, like, cans, bottles?
Correct. Yep, yep, just recycling. So, any questions that you might have?
Evan, I think that one slide regarding the survey wasn't missed or whatever. I don't know if you can just touch on what happened with that and the results are kind of all that.
Yeah, I missed that one. Yeah, so the survey that I created back early this year, I posted this in January on the city's website, on the city's Facebook page, and then also, there was a Hutch Leader article that was written about it. It had 10 quick questions, mostly yes or no. We received 106 responses with 41 questions or comments that were mostly very, very positive, thanking for us for what we do here, or asking if a certain item is compostable or not, or if they're doing everything right. And what we found through this could help us kind of tailor the program a little bit better to fit the residents' needs or wants, and hopefully help fix some of the contamination issue that we've seen as well. Yeah.
So, going forward, you're going to be leaving, so how do we carry on some of this stuff?
Right. Yeah.
Some of this good work.
We actually, yeah, we actually just talked about that this afternoon, doing some paperwork through the Green Corps program. It's going to be back to the staff that we had. Evan's done an awesome job of preparing all these documents and putting them in a file, and basically establishing a calendar, educational components, you know, the Facebook posts, anything that would be in the paper or the Parks and Rec book. The hard part's going to be is getting back to the one-on-one contacts. I mean, we won't have the time, staff won't have the time to do the door-to-door, and it was, excuse me, very great to hear that the positive responses that he was getting for that, and this is only on one small section of town. I wish he was here for another, you know, six months to be able to do everybody in town, just, you know, every little bit would help. But it's, I don't want to say it's going to be a struggle, but we're going to do the best we can now that we have a decent, updated baseline to work off of. The program itself over the last several years has kind of been put on the back burner, but now with a little refresher that Evan has given us, we'll hopefully be able to keep it alive and well.
So, Andy, I was going to ask you before, but I knew you're, I know how you like to stand up a couple of times, but how's the sales going with the bags?
Sales were down just a touch this year. In terms of overall volume, we projected, or let's just compare it to last year, we projected just shy of 1.4 million. We are actually 50,000 bags below our projected volume. So, 50,000 bags could ultimately, you know, compute into, depending upon what products are down, but could possibly be, you know, 50,000, 60,000, $70,000 in revenue. The caveat to that is our bulk sales have been phenomenal this year. BitCon, that's just continues to gain momentum moving forward. In the years past, it's always been a crushing event every other year, and last year, we crushed the most tonnage we've ever crushed, and we will most likely be out this fall already, so it's not even lasting a year. So, we're already in the process of soliciting quotes and hopefully getting more on the ground here before winter.
Great. Have you been able to utilize some of the compost that has some contamination?
You know, we haven't this year. For whatever reason, we haven't came across the MINDOD jobs like we have in the past. You know, that would be our most viable outlet for it, and we just, we haven't had, we haven't had the contact with anybody. I don't know if it's, if there's other, you know, processors or producers that are already in the contractor's portfolio, so to say, or if there's just not that many projects requiring it, you know, in outstate Minnesota or out this direction, so.
Would the county use some of that on some of their projects? I don't know.
I guess I don't know. I haven't talked to Elvis or John, I guess, for that matter. That's a good point. We can certainly reach out to him.
Anything else for Andy? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
Thank you.
What's next? Oh, sorry. Evan, what's next for you?
That's a good question. I'm still job searching, finding something.
Okay. Well, good luck.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Discussion on suggested ordinance changes for Chapter 111, Peddlers and Solicitors, and Chapter 123, Food Vendors.
Mayor and council, including your council packet, there was a letter that, I don't know, was sent to me and I forwarded on to the council from Dan Hart on behalf of Bobber Brewing Company, kind of, I guess, requesting and raising some questions regarding both our Food Vendors ordinance and our Peddlers and Solicitors ordinance, looking at some suggested changes, and kind of, I guess, really throwing it back to us and the council on, you know, what's the desire, what's the policy of where you'd like to see both of these codes go. I think Dan did a good job of sharing some of, I guess, issues that he's had in regards to some of the things that he's trying to recruit based off of the current language. I think a good portion of that we can address if the council has a desire to do that. So, I'm not sure exactly how you want to handle the different items raised in the letter. I can go through them, I guess, one by one, and, I guess, I'm turning to you guys on how you'd like to.
Well, did you want to explain to the general public what's the question, or should we have Dan maybe speak to it a little bit, or whatever works?
Whatever works. I mean, Dan, you gave me an email that I...
I did.
Did I do a good job of summarizing it?
I believe so.
So, I can kind of go through, we'll start with maybe Chapter 123, just how I laid out in the memo that I sent to the city council, that deals with our...
Can finally have Dan come up and just introduce himself so the people at home can see who we're talking to. Everybody knows Dan.
I'm pretty sure most people know me by now. I'm the most eligible Hutchinson bachelor right now, just so you know. For all of you who don't know me, I'm Dan Hart. My address is 255 North High Drive, Northwest Apartment 116. I'm one of the owners of Bobbing Bobber Brewing Company, and, yeah, that's my big wow introduction.
I'll touch on the Food Vendors license, and this is regarding either our mobile food carts or mobile food trucks. I know we've had conversations on this within the past year, and I guess some of the questions that were raised by Dan was, first off, he was wondering if there was an opportunity to relax that, some of those requirements for the brewery. He did express some concerns on the cost of a license. And one thing I did note in my memo is that right now, all we offer is an annual license, and that's the $125 fee. And some of the research that we did from staff did show that there are several communities, and I would say a good portion of them, that do offer temporary one-time permits. Currently, we don't do that. So, if you're looking to get a food license in town, you need to get, you need to purchase the annual license, that's $125. I mean, the benefit of that is that it covers you for the entire year. I think the detriment to it is that maybe you're only looking to come and serve one day out of the year, and so, right now, you're looking to have to pay that $125 fee. You know, there were some questions raised about whether most of these vendors, I wouldn't say all of them, are required to have a state license. Our current ordinance also requires them to have a city license, and so there was some discussion about potentially waiving the city portion of that and just having it be okay for the state license. And then there was a question regarding additionally insured. That's something that we currently require of... Um, and then there was a question regarding additionally insured. That's something that we currently require of, um, anyone who's looking to get a permit for either a cart or a vehicle. Um, and as we did research on that, not every city requires that. Some do, some don't. Um, I can say, and I spoke to it in the memo, right now, we don't require it for any of our peddlers or solicitors, solicitors licenses. Um, and that's really, uh, I guess, a comfortability level when it comes to the city council and how much protection you want in regards to, you know, to that, those type of things.
Is there a requirement within the state to have insurance? Like, are we like doubling them up with our requirements?
Believe so.
I don't think there's a requirement to have any insurance with regard to these types of licenses. I know there is with regard to alcohol sales, like for example, on sale, intoxicating, things like that.
And then I know, um, the last question Hannah raised was about, you know, River Song and, and similar festivals that have their event once a year. And as I noted, there's that, the council, it's been the council's practice to essentially approve that and okay, okay that, kind of through our community festival language that we have, which is, it's not really in our ordinance, that's been the practice. And as I noted, it's something that, that we do need to address, and so, so there's several different items within, um, the concerns expressed. And like I said, you know, depending on how strict, how loose, um, any specific changes the council is interested in, you know, changes could be made in the ordinance. And I think that's some of what Dan is asking and probably the question, and then to turn back around to the council in regards to that section of, um, the city code. So, if you wanna maybe address that first, so. And Dan, if I missed anything, feel free to add.
You know, I'm, all I'm trying to do is look, I'm not looking for any special privilege of any kind. I, I know that there's plenty of things that go on in town. The arts and crafts, the things at the mall, the things at the fairgrounds, things at Riverside Park, uh, the farmer's market. I'm just looking to try and bring in some extra business into town, try and help boost the community a little bit more with, uh, bringing more tourists to our community, so it, you know, just trying to figure out a way of being able to loosen the restrictions, so I'm not having to plan out a full month in advance for the, uh, license process that is required by the city for these vendors to come in. Um, every brewery I drive by on a weekend has two to three food trucks parked out in front of it, and, you know, it's one of those things where they're another small business and you're just trying to help another group along. These people eventually want to have their own brick and mortar restaurants. If we, if they come out here from the metro and see that people really like their product, you, you just never know, maybe they'll wanna set up shop here. You, you just, you have no idea, but it's, it's an avenue of trying to get, uh, more small business to help them along. And they always seem to do very well. It's within what the last six years that food trucks have become overly popular. And a lot of it has to do with, it costs them a hundred thousand dollars to buy a truck and set it up instead of a million dollars to start a restaurant, which, you know, we know that over sixty percent of restaurants fail within the first three years.
Um, one thing, I was looking at stuff, and I think you came across it Matt too, but in Minneapolis, they have what they call a sponsorship program. You touched on it for the transient merchant, but Minneapolis does it for, um, food trucks as well. And, you know, when I saw that, it kind of brought things on par to like the mall or, um, River Song or public festivals, you know, that part of it, where it really puts the onus back on the sponsor. There's still short-term licenses that need to be required, but the cost is a lot different. They had the sponsorship fee, it sounded like, was ninety dollars, but that was almost unlimited number of food trucks.
I think if he was based off of how many vendors were gonna be at, um, at the, that event, you know, the interesting thing is I looked into that more, and this is, obviously, every city can make their own guidelines. Those vendors did need to have a city license though still too, so, on time, you know, so obviously there was some sort of?
Short-term.
Yes.
Event, event thing, so.
You know, and so as I look at some of the, the requests within this section of the ordinance, um, and I raise concern, and we do from a staff point of signaling out one individual business. You know, if, so if we're gonna make any changes, staff's recommendation would be is that that's a blanket change for either a type of business or, or all businesses. You know, when it comes down to the costs, you know, we don't have a temporary, and I think we could easily do that. There's many communities that, that, that do that. You know, really, the, the question about a city fee versus a state fee, right now, we require a city fee. So that's like really a conversation for the council on whether or not that's something you, you would like to relax or not. And then additionally insured, that's really, I guess, up to the council as well to decide that, whether or not that's something that, that you wanna require.
From our previous discussion, you know, with the North Star, pretty much all cities seem to still require a license of some kind, didn't they?
Yeah, most of them, you know, a lot of them had the temporary, kind of one day, and they allowed up to, I think, so many within a year. That was the norm of what I saw. I didn't see a whole lot of, kind of how, I think, the way we're set up, Minneapolis is similar to it, and LA is similar to it. But most of them were kind of a one-day temporary type of, you know, fees. So I think there's advantages to both. I mean, the advantage obviously with the annual is take out that one and you're good for the whole year, so.
What kind of fees are communities charging for their dailies?
And I put in here anywhere from twenty to thirty-five dollars is what I saw.
And to require extra insurance, um, if we don't, for the communities that don't do that, are they opening themselves up to any liability, or why would we do that, or?
Well, and Matt and I have talked about this, obviously, um, you know, my big concern is, and lawyers are always the fun busters, right?
Fun police.
So you always think of the worst-case scenario, and, um, so here you have a situation where the city is issuing a license. In other words, we're granting permission for this person or this entity to be in town and be conducting business. And again, in the worst-case scenario, somebody gets hurt, something goes wrong. The tendency, when the person sues, is going to be suing everybody that's involved, and the city granted the license. In other words, the city granted permission for that person to be conducting their activity in town. And so I would have no doubt that the city would be named as a defendant in a lawsuit.
What if?
But along with that, wouldn't it be, Dan, would you be named in that? You would be?
Potentially. I'm, you know, and I've, I've got a pretty good insurance policy, I think.
Would municipal immunity protect us through that?
Um, you know, obviously, our insurance company would raise that as a defense.
Yeah.
I couldn't say for sure that we would be protected by that.
I mean, just to compare it to like the brick and mortars that are around that we don't require that, you know, I mean, do we have added liability just because they're temporary?
And, and that dovetails into something that Matt and I talked about. Um, if we're to make changes to these ordinances, should we be taking into consideration where the activity is taking place? So, if it's happening in a public area where maybe we have some more exposure, is that something we should think about? If it's, for example, someone hiring a food truck for their kid's graduation party on their own property, does that make a difference?
Some other private property. That's what I was gonna suggest. Like, do we need it if it's on private property versus public property?
And that's certainly something you guys could, could decide on right now. It's required any place inside of city limits.
So, in the Taste of Hutchinson, none of those vendors name the city as a insured then?
Correct. So, I mean, we're, they, you know, the, whatever, the Chamber, I believe, puts on the Taste of Hutchinson, they're taking out the request from the city to host that event. Um, but I mean, that's where, and I have no problem saying that's where we're somewhat not consistent with, with how we handle the community events and stuff. And, and even to Mark's point, we don't require for our, our peddlers and solicitors license that we issue, so it's, at one point or another, the city decided that we were gonna ask for it to be additionally insured when it came to food trucks and food vendors.
I was trying to think of a scenario that a food truck would come that's not part of another event or on private properties, like, would, would a food truck just come and set up? They couldn't set up in just like in a park?
Not right now, no.
Right.
It happens, and every now and then we, we have to place their direction, and so.
Sure.
You know, for, for a number of years, um, I can't remember the name of the business, so I'll just call it the Taco Truck from Lenco.
Right, right.
Would be setting up in front of the Best Buy store.
Right.
Private property.
Yeah, but I'm saying like that they would, I'm saying like city liability, like they would just come and set up on public property. I don't know what scenario would play out that that would?
You could have something going and set up at?
At the Harrington Merrill House.
Or at, at the depot, or at, you know, one of our parks, in one of the parking lots of our parks, yeah.
I suppose.
Something like that.
Well, you know, this is, and I've talked to Dan about this too, and, and I guess, me being a businessman, I, I have different companies coming into town that do the same business as I do, and they're not required to have any license to come in and work. And I guess, I, I don't understand what the difference is between a food truck and somebody that comes in and does windshields, you know?
Well, one of the big things, at least from the state standpoint, would be selling products for human consumption, and there should be some regulation in case something happens, someone gets sick, whatever.
Yeah.
And, and that's also a factor, and I can't remember if Matt talked about it in his memo, but, um, the whole purpose behind this licensing is so the city can keep track of who's conducting business in town. In case something, again, something does happen, who do we contact? How can we track someone down?
You know, realistically, we could just say that we want a twenty-dollar, so we know that they're, you know, twenty-dollar permit to be in town, so we know that they're in town and that they can be checked out for all their, the state license and everything.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, you know, and I guess that's part of the question that Dan's raising and staff is asking. It, it's how restrictive or how loose do you wanna be? You know, there's some communities that allow food vendors, but they designate areas. These are the only areas food trucks can go. We don't do that, we don't do that right now. Um, like I said, a lot of them don't require insurance. You know, so it's, it's really one of those policy decisions that's in front of you for you guys to, you know, my assumption is that originally this was set up as a permit requirement due to other businesses in town to, to be somewhat protective of them.
So if you would, explain to me on a sponsorship, if Dan took sole responsibility for that, to have three or four or five vendors in his parking lot, which is private, uh, private domain, so to speak, if you wanna call it that, could he not be responsible for those people?
That's essentially what I read the sponsorship option is, is that Dan's taking the responsibility.
To him to do that. There's no cost to the vendors that are coming in at this particular time.
Is that what I understand? Right now, the vendors have to get a permit from the city.
Even to do that.
Even to do that. Now, this would be the next question. If you want to go down the route of providing a sponsorship, are you gonna charge a permit fee? Are you gonna require insurance for that? Those are the, the other questions that the council?
I think Dan and I had some conversation on that.
And I did fully understand from that perspective, but, uh, it looked to me like it was his way out to get vendors there. You're still telling me that it's only that?
Right now, we don't allow that in our cer- current city code. And so, part of this discussion tonight, and I guess the direction staff is looking for, if you have a desire to see something changed, then Mark and I need to start working on drafting an ordinance that would make those changes.
Yeah, I guess I would like to see that they would have a sponsorship that, you know, the fee, you know, I don't know if, if, I don't know if you make it on how many vendors, that how the fee schedule would go, or you just have a flat fee?
A little bit that I've looked at, that's how their fees, it's, you know, one through so many vendors, it's this fee, it's ten to twenty, it's this fee, that's how that's set up.
Yeah, I like the idea of the sponsorship option. I also like just having a temporary one-day option in case somebody's not being part of a bigger event or, you know, going to the brewery, you know, 'cause maybe they just wanna be like, you say, like come to the farmer's market one day, you know? I think that'd be a nice option.
Well, you know, that, that kind of, you know, Chad, that kind of covers me and you both if we have, you know, have a outdoor motion day that you could have a food vendor out, you know?
Get some tacos.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, and, you know, when, you know, when it costs you, you know, so much money.
You know, and I guess the next question is based off of this portion of it, is there additionally insured?
Said I'd be fine. It's on private property, it's not necessary. If it's on public prop- should be required.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree also. I like the sponsorship idea, and I also like the one-time, 'cause you might have someone who's only gonna show up once.
That's, that's the big thing. I mean, I've, I just had a food vendor contact me last week, the day after I got your letter, asking me if they could come out and s- they had a cancellation. We'd like to come out on Saturday and set up, and I said, well, do you have your city license? And they go, what, what are you talking about? And I said, well, our city requires a license. It's about a month-long process, 'cause you run through a background check. There's many steps to it. And they said, oh, well, the only two cities that we've ran into issues like that is Minneapolis-St. Paul. Otherwise, you know, they just book a spot to come in and hang out at whatever business is allowing them to, you know, sell their food. Obviously, as long as they have their current health department and, you know, their stuff has been checked out for inspections.
Just to clarify, there's quite a few other cities that require the license and permit.
There, I'm, I'm not doubting that there's some licenses. I know Anandale doesn't require anything, as far as I know, Excelsior doesn't either. Um, you know, so it's, there's, Spring Park doesn't require anything either. The Back Channel Brewery has two food trucks every day that they're open, um, you know?
Saying that either, so.
Yeah, and I'll, and I can speak to that. I know that's one of the, I think frustrations, if you wanna say amongst the, I think it's the Mobile Food Cart Association, is that there is not a consistent practice throughout the state. And so, I mean, I think?
Yeah, there isn't. I agree.
That's, that's just a, an honest statement that every city is a little bit different, you know, and.
So therefore, we need to get ours put in writing, and we need to agree upon it, and we need to make it easy for the brick and mortar building that it works for them, and it works for us.
Yeah, and that's, that's, I, I guess that's the question that Dan's posing to you, is he would like to see it easier.
My, my big thing, all I'm looking for, is I'm not looking for anything that's making me exempt per se. I mean, I had to ask for it. It's part of the deal. You, you always have to ask for something and, and find out where you stand. Um, but what I'm looking for is something that's a little bit less restrictive, maybe not necessarily a rubber stamp, but if we can, if they come in, they show their state license, they, they fill out the paperwork, they pay the fee, whatever it may be, twenty-five dollars, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and then boom, they get the stamp, they're ready to go, they've proved themselves that they have everything, just to streamline it so, you know, we can try and bring new things to Hutch.
Time-wise.
Well, I just have a question related to that, since I'm in the department that issues the licenses. So with these temporaries, is the vision that, yeah, they walk in, they give what they need to give, and they get a license, or is it still council approval?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's.
You know, timing-wise, somebody wants to come in on Friday, they can't.
Yeah, you know, that's, you know, right now, to get a license, it has to get approved by the council as well. And so, not every license is like that. You know, a building permit doesn't need to come in front of the city council, and so those are some of those.
Could this be a special thing that we give you the power to do it?
Well, all, all it is, is that however you set up that ordinance is whether, you know, I would say, however you wanna set up that ordinance. I mean, 'cause right now, we have several, I mean, that's, I'm trying to think of what other licenses don't require.
Solicitor registration doesn't, or confirms, I mean, for Mark's, okay?
Transient. Transient.
Well, I can see from, from Dan's point of view, a guy calls him Thursday night and says, hey, I got canceled from here, can I come over to the brewery? You know, and that, that way Dan could get in here and have the food truck at, you know, on Saturday, which I think, you know, and the other thing, I was just wondering is the, the sponsorship deal, is that a, does he have to do that every time that he's going to, he names, you know, like five food trucks that are coming out and then, or is that an annual, annual thing?
Well, to me, the way you guys are discussing the ordinance, you're going to have, you're leaning to have a temporary one, which I think addresses that. The sponsorship addresses if you're going to have five or six people out on a, for a big event or something.
Yeah, but what I'm asking is a sponsorship, would that cover like a yearly, annual, or, or that's up to us, I guess.
It's really up to you, I would say generally what I've looked at is for, it's per event.
Per event.
And I think that only makes sense because you don't know consistently what vendors are going to be at what event, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, in that license, they're listing who, who the vendors are.
Right.
Stuff like that, so. Yeah, and so, what's nice with the sponsorship too is that it would be available for anybody that wanted to sponsor any of it. Do away or fast track the license, you know, and their license, we still have to have the approval and the background check on, so. I'm just wondering about being too targeted, you know, kind of what Matt had talked about right up front is, you know, are we going to do this for one business or, you know, being consistent for everyone, so.
Well, I think that once that gets out, we might have other businesses come and say, hey, I want this too.
I think the sponsorship covers that, but it's more just the fast tracking of the license, does that.
I mean, to me, I mean, this is obviously, some of the work.
Need the license.
Some of the work that we need to do, I think if it's on private property, that's probably a little bit easier than if it's going to be on public property.
Right, you know, I guess one concern I would have with the sponsorship idea, as far as fast tracking it, there might be some concerns, especially from the police department, as far as where it is, does that affect traffic at all, parking, things of that nature and, you know, from my standpoint, the police department certainly has to be kept in the loop on those types of things.
If you're going to have multiple vendors, where it's going to have an impact on the traffic.
Well, I think, I think a big event has to be planned out, right Dan?
Well, I've been planning Oktoberfest for a number of months now, so.
I think that, that part of it kind of answers itself, I mean, that you're not going to come in on Thursday and say, hey, I'm going to have five trucks out here because you, you got.
No, an event like that would require planning, I mean, granted, would I, I'd love to be able to do a big food truck rally and have eight food trucks out in the parking lot and try and bring different people out, you know, whether or not it's tourism or people in town, just getting them out and about and, and seeing what else there is to offer, you know, that's, it's, they're fun things, they're big activities that go on quite regularly in other communities and I just wanted to try and bring some of that to us too, you know.
Barbecue day.
You know.
Tailgate party.
Mayor and council, obviously, we could probably sit here and I think the best thing for us is that we've got, I think, the general idea on where the council wants to go, that allows us to draft some changes to the ordinance to address that, we can obviously share that with Dan or anyone else in town who's interested and they can always then provide feedback to the council on whether they think this is appropriate. So that, that at least allows us to, to work on what we something to add to this. I think what we're really looking for.
Dan, are we looking at?
Well, you know, we can, we can have a first draft at the next council meeting. I guess it's how, what's the desire of the council, we know that every ordinance takes two readings, so at the earliest, we could have something approved at the September tenth council meeting.
Time wise, or, you know, everything else going on?
Whatever you guys want, we'll figure it out.
Dan, when is your big event?
Well, our first event is Oktoberfest, but I only have the two food vendors that are allowed in town, which is Lunch Lee's and the Taco Truck from Glencoe, those are the two I have booked for that weekend, so.
And the date?
September twenty-seventh and September twenty-eighth.
Those are the only two with licenses so far. We'd love to have a.
And the ice cream truck too.
There's an ice cream truck? How come I wasn't told about this? I love ice cream.
You didn't hear the, didn't hear the bells ringing?
I need somebody to hand me out a network, you know, a little business card so I can find them.
Like I said, we, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to have a first reading, whether or not that's going to be the one that the council's comfortable with, that's going to be up for you guys to decide, so, I mean, I think we can have something at the next council meeting and then whether or not you guys want to consider it as a first reading or not, it's going to be up to you guys to take a look at. Are we comfortable with on the food side, I can touch on the vendors and solicitors and peddlers. Chapter eleven deals with peddler's license and solicitors and I know Mr. Hart raised a couple of questions in that, one, he was asking about Bobby and Robert, Bobbing, Bobber Brewing Company being included in the exemptions list, right now, the exemption goes to the mall, a chamber sponsored event and the event center, as we, at least from a staff standpoint, as we've shared, we've always got concerns on, you know, exempting an individual business, but that, at the end of the day, is still up to the council to decide. If not the exemption he talked about, similar to a food, but some of a, you know, can, can he hold a transient merchant license, which was that would stem back kind of that sponsorship idea that we've talked about, then also the licenser cost too. And as I shared with the food vendor, all we offer right now is an annual license as well when it comes to peddler's solicitors, transient merchants. And so, you know, we would have the option, I guess, if the council desired to do one day permits for those as well.
So right now, like, we've had some of these pop-up shops, they have to do the hundred and twenty-five, right? They have to sell a lot of things to make that worthwhile.
Some of them have, probably four or five a year and that one permit covers all of that, so.
Yeah, seems like the sponsorship idea with that and the short, you know, day thing, transient merchant, somebody comes in for the water carnival parade, they do the hundred and twenty-five dollar.
That's covered under the festival, so.
There's a parade permit for transient merchants, like for thirty dollars.
If you guys don't mind, I've got a couple of printouts here, can I hand those to you?
Thank you. How to pins?
They're from all over, aren't they?
People coming to your.
So, what my thought was with this transient merchant license deal is I'm trying to organize my own craft market or craft vendor event at the brewery to help bring more business to town, more visitors, more tourism, people that will, just like the arts and crafts downtown, it does very well, it brings in a lot of local vendors that live just outside of town and they only come to a couple of events in town each year and they're always at Library Square or at, at the fairgrounds and they do that for one reason only and that's to avoid the transient merchant process because the woman who's making handmade jewelry at six dollars a bracelet, takes her a lot of bracelets to sell enough to pay for the merchant license and then her booth license, or booth fee as well, so they choose not to try and even do a transient merchant in town. And so, what I'm showing you with those pictures is the draw that we have, we have a voluntary map on, in the brewery, not everybody pins where they're coming from, but the majority of people like to throw up their pin, it gives us a good idea of where we're drawing from so we know how to run our advertising and our marketing to continue to bring people to town. When there is those large events such as the craft fair at Library Square, the events at the fairgrounds, Orange Spectacular, things like that where there's multiple vendors coming into town, it draws a lot of people to town, it also brings all those vendors to town, all of them spend money in town, whether or not it's at our gas stations, at our restaurants, at our hotels, if they're traveling long distances, it's, it's another way to boost the town of Hodge and all I'm looking for is to make that process a little bit easier on the transient merchant side so we can bring more of those in. I, I know that the construction on Main Street is going to be hard for a lot of the business, small businesses in town that really rely on you being able to walk on the sidewalk and by having these merchant fairs at the brewery, which is, I'm just providing them a venue, that's what I'm looking at doing is providing them the fairgrounds or the Library Square on our property so that they can sell their goods and wares and eventually try to get that brick and mortar store. With the road construction coming in town, I, I feel that all of these merchant deals that I'd like to do, which is only about three a year, which they would not coincide with any of the other things that are going on in town because there's no reason to compete. What we want to do is continuously be bringing people to town, I feel that if I can give a venue to where our side of the street is only going to get resurfaced and not be shut down, where some of the businesses on Main Street can come down and we can do a artisan craft market, they're able to sell their products there as well, to really, hopefully, maybe it gives them a two hundred dollar boost for their week, which they could really use it or maybe it gives them a thousand dollar boost, you know, that's, we're, they're all having to pay the city tax and we, they all have to have their tax ID numbers and they all have to be insured, from the research I've done with talking with Bob Paulson, who does the Orange Spectacular at the fairgrounds and Steve, I can't remember his last name, does all the stuff for the county fair, you know, from what I've understood, from what they do for bringing in vendors and what they require of them is, I don't want to use the word lax, but it's, it's not a huge thing that they require from them, they require a tax ID, they require insurance and they require a health department license if they're a food vendor and all I'm trying to do is trying to give those other small merchants an opportunity to, you know, get people to see their name, see their brand and I'm starting business myself and trying to push my brand is very difficult and I'm just trying to give that help that I've received from a lot of other people to get us out there. And as you can see, we have a pretty, pretty big draw, people come here to check out the brewery and then they stop and they hang out and they buy food products and whatever else and being a dual city with having the winery and the brewery, it makes us a big destination spot for people traveling out from the metro, it really does.
I think I shared with the council, I think the temporary, even the sponsorship, is fine, I don't see an issue with that. I think some of the proposals that you are looking at impacts really the whole community, I think that's just important to, to realize that obviously Dan's here speaking on his behalf, but this does open it for other people, which very well fine, but we just need to be aware of that.
As far as the sponsorship, did you notice, do they limit to the number of events, I mean, could you have a sponsorship every weekend or?
Can't say, I've looked into it a lot.
Would that be worthwhile too, just, I mean, versus just getting full license for people? Anyway, I think, yeah, those opportunities make sense with that as well, the transient merchant. Might help with other people that are renting at the depot or might want to have a show of time there. Again, if somebody comes in to get a license, it's all timing basically, when to get it on for council approval.
Yeah, I mean, for those that require council approval, it's, a lot of times depends on when they get the application and when the council meet next and if it requires a background check.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, unfinished business, follow up discussion on amending chapter ninety-three, animal pertaining to chickens.
Mayor and council, it's actually been quite some time since we last discussed this back in May, following our original discussion in May, council had asked staff to do, I guess, a survey, if you want to say, regarding some other communities and, and the experiences that they're having with chickens, I've included, you know, the feedback that we got from that within your council packet and then there was some suggested language changes. And so, I guess, really, staff's in front of you guys tonight to ask, where is the direction do you, do you want to go with this, this ordinance? Do we want to have a, consider a reading of it or, or don't we? And if we are going to consider a reading of it, are we comfortable with the language that's been proposed? Are there things that you would like to see changed? Like I said, it's kind of been just sitting out there now for the past two or three months and, you know, you know, I think within the last month, we've had at least one or two calls regarding chickens again, so we're, at least from a staff's perspective, we're trying to give some direction to the public on what's going to take place.
I guess I'll start it off because I started it off last time, but after looking at all the feedback that we got from other communities and actually talking to some of our community members, I think that I'm not comfortable with having chickens in town.
Did you say you're not?
I'm not.
Well, I will tell you what I've heard and what I've been told by community people, I have not had one phone call that has said to me, please let me have chickens, but I have had numerous calls and I have had people stop and talk to me and say, don't you let chickens in our city? I looked at the data that's out there and a lot of the cities, you know, if they have them, they're more restricted, you know, they're like, you have to have the consent of the property owners, you have to be a good neighbor, you know, if your neighbor says, no, I don't want you to have chickens, you're not going to get chickens, they've limited the amount to what I've seen here to three, four was the max. Now, I think there's just a lot of issues, people want bees now, I mean, are we going to let them, that'll be the next thing that comes up for us, you know, your neighbor's going to want to have bees in their yard.
Jase Mary, that'd save me about twelve miles driving one way.
I know it would, wouldn't it? Right, so, I'm not for chickens, just because. Right. So I'm not for chickens, just because we're elected by the people for the people. And I think the majority of the people don't want chickens in town. They want them not as their neighbors.
I've had a mix of feedback. I've had a couple of negative emails, but no calls. Well, a couple of calls maybe. But people, if I've just asked them, it seems like people either don't care or... I haven't had a lot of passionate for it, but I don't think there'd be anything wrong with allowing four chickens and requiring maybe like 50% of your neighbors to be okay with it. But I would be okay with having a chicken ordinance that allows chickens. Didn't seem like any of the feedback from the other communities was all that negative.
I would say those that we have talked to and those that allow them, like basically said, that's not an issue.
Yeah. And I have friends in other communities that have chickens and they said it's... I have a friend that, I think she lives in Robbins, she lives in Robbinsdale and they don't even, if you have under four chickens, they don't require you to even tell the city that they're having chickens. Doesn't seem to be an issue, but I'd be okay with allowing chickens, I guess.
I've had one phone call, was, she was rather adamant. But on the other hand, I have personal, person to person talks with other people and again, some are for it and some are somewhat against it. But I've never had, except for the one phone call, it was really blatantly against it. So I don't have an issue with all the other cities around. And yes, we don't always have to be like other cities, you know, from that perspective. But on the other hand, anywhere up to, I think there was one that had about a dozen or something like that, that allowed, you know, for that. And all they're talking about is keeping it contained, keeping your feed, you know, from being contaminated and that type of thing. So I think basically, I don't disagree with Mary. We're voted in by the people and we should do what the people ask us to do and do it in a fair way. And when you're a 50-50 match, it's hard to probably do that in all honesty. But on the other hand of it is, we also have the right, if we start something, we also have the right to stop it. So if it becomes an issue, then we can stop it. If it isn't an issue and it goes on without, without any controversy. But my thing of it is, is I feel that people today, and I know Mr. Massman is not, he's more into the chicken thing, but I think a lot of people that would get chickens in time would probably realize that they are not, it's not a priority in their lives. And to me, chickens are a high priority in your life. Cause you have to take care of them and you have to be responsible for them. And you, you know, you don't want your chickens to be not taken care of. You can't go on vacations maybe without someone else doing something or you move them somewhere else. And I think the restraints would become self-regulatory when it comes down to that. So I guess I would be, I would be for chickens.
Just for the council, we don't have an ordinance in front of your consideration. That's, I guess that's the direction that I'm really asking is, should there be an ordinance for you to consider?
Oh, and I've looked at it. I like the ordinance that's proposed, if we're gonna have it. That limits to four, requires the okay of all the adjoining property owners. You know, I thought it really encompassed everything really well. I guess my concern is, you know, these are considered farm animals and we have a whole list of other farm animals. And so what's next?
Ducks.
Ducks, little pig, somebody's got a big yard, can they have a horse?
Maybe a mini horse.
Yeah, right. But, so it's, and then I've had a couple of calls against. I haven't had anybody asking for it other than Mike, you know, when he first brought it forward. So I just don't see the big push and then just, again, would we... We never did see the petition, but yet, again, if somebody wanted to have the ducks there, are we gonna start opening that up? So I guess I don't see the urgency of doing anything and I'd be fine. I was always kinda wondering where things were at with this, but I didn't wanna ask to bring it up to start the discussion again. So, but here we are now and I guess I'd be fine not doing it. But if the council as a whole wanted to, I'd be fine too, as long as we had the ordinance that was provided. I think things that kinda get lost too is, from the health aspect, the CDC is... Salmonella is an issue versus purchasing birds sometimes to how it's kept. And I'm not saying that that's a reason not to approve it, but it's something that people have to be made aware of when they do get their license. And we talked about the education piece and that health aspect is a big part of that as well.
So it's my understanding that it's fair to say that you do not want to go down the road of having a chicken ordinance as a group? That's the consensus, right?
I would say yes.
Yes.
I know, but, you know, you guys put a lot of work into it.
This is, this is the, I mean, we can easily have a first reading and I guess if that gets voted down, that really ends that, that debate and that discussion. I mean, you know, so, just if we back up, you know, the question was raised to have the council consider allowing them in town. From that, we drafted an ordinance. There were some revisions that were asked that we made. And then there was a request for some additional feedback. So still that, that question lays out there is, you know, are we gonna consider an ordinance? And...
I think the first reading would be, best be done.
Because at the end of the day, if that doesn't...
And the day doesn't fly.
Then I guess that answers the question.
Yeah.
And I would say it also, it also allows feedback from the public on what's being proposed with that ordinance.
Agreed.
That would give Mike's chicken people a chance to really get on Steve.
I'll send mine to Mary, you send yours to Steve.
Well, we have to share that. We have to send some to Gary too.
Oh, I get it every time I see John from Runnings. He'll run across the parking lot to tell me not to have chickens.
I think that to be fair to the process with the request to put an ordinance together and with some desire from the council, from some council members, maybe not a majority, I think it's fair to at least have a first reading. I guess if that doesn't pass, then that answers that question.
That's good.
For four or five years, and we'll bring it up again.
You should be able to put it to roost.
All right, okay. Well, we'll have a, we'll have a draft and that'll be available for the public to read. It's ready to go, so we'll have it on the next.
Sounds good. Thanks, Matt. Ordinance number 19-802, ordinance to rezone property at 477 and 479, Highway 7 East from R2 Medium Density Residential to... Okay, Dan, what is that, L1?
I1.
I1?
I1, yes.
I1 Light Industrial Park as requested by Delo LLC Property with favorable planning commission recommendations, second reading and adoption.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members. As you recall, last meeting, we looked at this for the first reading and the area highlighted in yellow here had been zoned residential and the area to the back here, industrial. And really, we're just cleaning up this a little bit, the access to the, to the Highway 7 frontage road and zoning that, so it's all consistently one zoning versus two. You'll recall last month, we also approved a plat to create one lot for all this full area. So staff would recommend approval of the second reading of the ordinance for rezoning.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary?
Thank you, appreciate it.
New business, 2019 Main Street Sports Bar, Street Dance on September 27th and 28th, 2019.
Mayor and council, you have a request for a street dance, which is essentially they're asking you to extend the noise ordinance to allow amplified music until 12:30 PM on Friday, September 27th and Saturday, September 28th. And then to extend the liquor license area to include Nicole's and her in that parking lot E, which is a public parking lot.
I guess I've, I know we had through Water Carnival, Main Street had a couple of events like this. Then it went to 12:30. I was always a little uncomfortable with that. And then this year, I was gonna say something, but then it wasn't part of the Water Carnival this year. So, but we've had some complaints even with River Song and they wrap up at 11. We've had other, well, Bobbin Barber's event, you know, Oktoberfest is gonna be 11. And I think we just have to be, recognize that there are neighbors around and housing and people wanna sleep. And I think 11 o'clock's fine. And that way, we can be consistent with different requests as they come forward. That's my thought on it. I'm fine with doing it, but I think 12:30 is too late.
I don't have any heartburn about the 12:30 time. I would make a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the 12:30 time for Main Street Sports Bar. Chad and Mary, great.
Ask for a discussion.
Yep. Any discussion?
That's my piece.
Yep. Ryan's here. You wanna say anything, Ryan, or not to...
I don't know what to say.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing for us is...
Come up here.
Come on up, Brian. Hate to make you talk, but...
We got, I think the biggest thing for us is, it's the, the closer we can go to, the lot of time that we close is easier to weed people out or ask them to leave or whatever and there not be any issues. Because then they, to them, the bar's closed. Because as soon as you close, everybody wants to go right in. And it turns kind of into, you know, it's a mess. I mean, they just can't even, 'cause we used to go till midnight sometimes. They'd say, oh my God, I got one more hour. It's how it goes, obviously, when people drink, I think. So 12:30 is perfect, I think, in my mind, 'cause then we can just say, hey, the bar's closed. And then they just leave from there with the help of the police and things like that, so.
So, let's start over. What name, name and who you are?
Ryan Oslavich, owner, general manager of Main Street Sports Bar, not just in...
Thanks.
So what would happen if, in that regards, if you had the bar still open, you know, we're providing the liquor expanded area? You still had that, but not the amplified music? Would people still rush inside?
I, I would, yes.
Anything else for Ryan?
You're on both nights, Friday and Saturday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Ryan. We have a motion. Call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Steve? Nay.
Aye.
Aye. All righty, Second Annual Bobbin Barber Brewing Company Oktoberfest Event on September 27th and 28th, 2019.
Mayor and council, very similar to the Main Street Sports Bar request. This is for, through B.C., with the exception of times are 11:00 PM on Friday, September 27th. There's not an extension of time on the Saturday, done at 6:00 PM. But the liquor license and to include the tented in area, that's included on the map as well.
That just goes till 11?
Yep, on Friday and 6:00 on the Saturday.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Dave to approve.
Chief?
Yes, go ahead, chief.
Mayor, council, on the request, Saturday is, should be the same time as Friday. So it should be till 11:00 PM on both Friday and Saturday. I just didn't want you to go any further with the wrong information.
So, says right now 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
I was looking at the board action phone.
So, yeah. Admittedly, I may have made a mistake somewhere on that one. It wouldn't be the first time. Just the first time I got called.
It's all right, it's all right, you're new.
And it is recorded.
It's, yeah, that's, you have it listed in one place at 6, the other place at 11. So you're so much covered.
My apologies.
Yeah. Thanks.
It is midnight, huh?
No.
It's 11.
Well, that's what it says on here.
That's what it says here.
I just have one question for Dan. So Dan, to check for if they're all right to drive, do you make them say Bobbin Barber Brewery?
I do, they have to say it just two times fast.
Oh, two times fast.
Two times fast, that's it. That's it, two times fast.
So what do you have, what do you have going on those days?
Well, Friday is Customer Appreciation Day. We'll have a large tent out in front of the parking lot like we did last year. A little bit smaller, less space to heat. Last year was a little bit cold for us, being the second week in October. That's why we moved it this year to be a little bit warmer. So we can save some money in propane. But we've got customer appreciation on Friday, live music from 7:30 to 10:30 on the Friday. And then a half an hour for them to be able to mingle till it's time to go. And then Saturday, we're gonna have live music, starting at noon to 3. We'll have Georgia's Constantina Polka Band from the local area. And then we have a blues funk band that's played at Music in the Park for our second band from 3 to 7. And then we have a cover band that'll play from 8 o'clock until 11.
Good. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Made a motion.
Motion, second, gotta call the phone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary? You guys get me sidetracked, that's all.
You got yourself sidetracked.
Yeah, I know, I know. But thankfully Melissa's around to keep us straight here. Resolution number 15084, resolution accepting bids and awarding contract for the water treatment plant reverse osmosis membrane replacement project, letting number five, project number 19-10.
Mayor and council, I have nothing that even closely competes with the excitement of chicken and beer. So, but we do, we are at a point in the life of the water plant where it's time to replace the reverse osmosis membranes. And this is usually every six to seven year process. This'll be the second time we will have replaced them. And this was a bid that came in before. There were some irregularities, rebid the project, came in right about where we expected it to. So staff is recommending approval of the resolution, accepting the bid and awarding the contract.
Make a motion. Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried? Thanks, John. Uh, first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash eight oh three, ordinance repealing chapter thirty-four of the Hutchinson City Code Finance and Taxation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members, um, as I tried to explain in my council memo, and hopefully it wasn't too hard to understand, um, as you know, the, uh, cities had the sales tax in place since, I believe, two thousand and eleven to help finance the water and wastewater facilities. And, uh, this, in the summer of two thousand eighteen, the Supreme Court, for the first time, allowed states to, uh, charge sales tax for sales made by out-of-state retailers to residents in that state. Um, in response to that court decision, the Minnesota Legislature this past session changed the, uh, sales tax laws in the state to, um, permit the collection of that out-of-state sales tax revenue, and as I mentioned in my memo, the Department of Revenue, in conjunction with the Minnesota League of Cities, drafted a model ordinance for cities to use to take those new state law changes into account, which would, um, at least in theory, help bolster these cities' sales tax, uh, collections made by internet and out-of-state retailers. And before you tonight is an ordinance that accompany, pardon me, encompasses those changes, and I'd ask that you approve it.
How would a company know, know? Somebody in Hutchinson, there's a local sales tax?
You know, that's a great question, I assume that when, um, for example, when we instituted our sales tax, bulletins from the Department of Revenue went out to all licensed retailers, I believe, in the state, that informed them what part of Hutchinson, and I believe it's really only our zip code, um, that, that extra half cent is supposed to be collected on. So I would just assume that they would be sending that same information to anyone who does business, or has orders that comes into the state.
It's really a, the challenge is gonna fall on the Department of Revenue, 'cause they're the ones that then turn around, and so however they- Monitoring, sales that occur in Minnesota, that's gonna fall on too.
And it's, initially, it's gonna be interesting, as I noted in the memo, the law goes into effect on October first, um, but the Department of Revenue, uh, under the state law, has certain criteria that it uses, I believe it, uh, doesn't kick in until there's at least a hundred transactions made by that retailer, or ten transactions of over a hundred thousand dollars each. So if you're gonna do a one-time sale, someone from Missouri sells something in Minnesota, you don't have to worry about it, but it's only after you've established frequent sales into the state that kicks in.
Amazon.
Right, yep, and that's, and that really was, um, one of the examples that was used in my communication with the Department of Revenue, many of the online, for example, online hotel booking sites, things of that nature.
We have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried?
Thank you.
Mark? Um, first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash eight oh four, uh, ordinance, the spending enforcement of section ninety-two point zero one eight of the city code pertaining to hours of construction during the South Grade Road Reconstruction Project.
Mayor and Council, similar to, we, probably about once a year, we have a, a request that comes in regarding a construction project where they're looking to, to lower the hours, um, start of the day, um, this one is regarding the, the weekends, right now, our ordinance states nine AM, um, they're requesting that it be seven AM on the weekends, seven AM is our start time during the week, I know, last time I think we did this was with, uh, Old Road Roberts Road-
Century Avenue.
-project and Century Avenue projects, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Steve to approve, any other discussion?
Thanks. John, is there gonna be a phasing to it, I think, wasn't the roundabout, the section to the east being on Ferris?
Yeah, there's kind of three pieces to the puzzle, um, some of them will be concurrent, um, but, uh, there's the overlay and the moving of the, uh, curb slightly south to the west of, of, uh, Merrill Street, and then the section between Merrill Street and the highway, you know, which would include that, um, interchange around and roundabout on the Cashwise entrance, and then the signal itself, um, the change out of the signals will be kind of happening, um, also. Uh, so there's, there's lots of moving parts to the project, and, and that's really kind of what the contractor was, was hoping, um, you know, to accomplish, is to have Saturdays available, where they could start at seven and get going, and we're also entering the time of the year where we're starting to lose daylight, um, pretty fast, and so it just helps them, um, with that as well, so.
Thanks.
John, is there, is there gonna be, when they do the signaling stuff, is there gonna be any closure of roads, or they're gonna, they will, they keep the traffic flowing there?
The intent is to do what can be done to maintain traffic, um, I, there's gonna be times, I'm sure, we'll have to reroute, especially coming from the west. You know, there's some options to get into that area from, uh, if you keep going south, obviously, you can use the main entrance into the mall, some other, um, ways to get to the, um, so there, there may be times when that is necessary, but the intent is try to keep what we can moving, so.
Thanks. Call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried? Thanks. Uh, setting budget workshops. Chad, take it easy here now, I know you get excited here.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, obviously, we're getting to the, the preliminary budget approval season, um, and with that, um, we're looking for two workshops, one, the August twenty seventh, that will be to discuss the preliminary CIP, um, and then the one on September tenth is to discuss the preliminary, um, tax levy and budget.
Make a motion to set those meetings?
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to set those workshops, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried? Uh, we have minutes, reports from committees, boards, or commissions, uh, Economic Development Authority Board minutes from June twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, the Hutchinson Utility Commission minutes from June twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, the Planning, Zoning, Building Department Quarterly Report. Chief Gipperson, you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, I guess I've been asked to speak.
Yeah. I asked. Matt, to see if Tom was-
I told you, yes, he can't speak, so.
Um, I've been asked to speak regarding the civil defense sirens in town, uh, apparently, Councilmember Cook had been approached by several people, uh, during the last tornado warning, um, said that they felt that the sirens were difficult to hear, and, um, and one of those people happened to be outside at the time, um, when they observed that, I guess, for lack of a better term, so, um, I guess I'm here to talk about that a little bit, um, and give, well, I got a visual aid. Okay, so, um, what we have here is just a map, uh, our most recent map of our civil defense siren coverage in the city, as you can see, uh, there's nine civil defense sirens placed throughout the city, um, and that allows, you can see the rings of coverage, um, and we've pretty much encompassed, the city limits of Hutchinson and, and then some, um, civil defense siren was never meant to be anything more than an outdoor warning system, um, it's great that people can hear it while they're in their homes sometimes, but what it's really intended for is those people that happen to be outside, um, not, don't have access to a radio or a television, and gives them, hopefully, early warning to seek shelter. So, um, I just did an informal survey at the office today, uh, and the people that were at home at the time, some people outside of the city, uh, heard the sirens, so, you know, I can't really, we do have a system in place for monitoring the sirens, um, obviously, we do a, a monthly, uh, check, our test of the sirens, um, and two times during the year, we actually sound the sirens for the rest of the county, and the county does that back for us. Um, we used to send an officer or an employee to each siren site during that test, um, but I believe it was in two thousand fifteen, perhaps, uh, we purchased equipment, um, and upgraded all of our sirens, so we no longer had to use those resources to, to do that, uh, the, the equipment di, or, um, does its own diagnostics and gives us a report every time we test. I think it will probably still be a good idea if, once a year, we do send employees out, uh, to just visually check that, um, and the other thing that we are looking at is, signing a service contract with some, with a technician that would come out and put hands on those sirens once a year. Um, that's not in the, for the upcoming budget cycle, but would be for next year's budget cycle.
But Tom, we didn't have, at least from our diagnostic testing, we didn't, nothing showed up as-
No, no malfunctions during that time, so, um, and, uh, we do have a pretty good, um, I'm trying to say, how am I gonna say this, the residents that live near those sirens take ownership of them, and they call us if they don't go off on a Wednesday. Um, it's kind of a night, nice thing, but, um, if we're five minutes late in sounding the sirens, we start getting phone calls asking why the siren didn't go off on a Wednesday, so. So I'm fairly confident that they were all working that day, at least, again, our diagnostics showed that they were all working, um, and we didn't receive any calls to the contrary.
Where's, can you put your finger on where the rec center is, that's where they kind of talked about?
Um, well, it looks like it would be right about there, right in the middle of everything. Maybe a little bit farther south than that.
Yeah, 'cause that, uh- Seems like there's a little overlap or on the edge.
Yeah.
Couple of them.
Well, yeah, theoretically, if you're at the rec center, you should be hearing five or six different sirens.
I heard it inside my house that night, and I live behind the brewery, kind of, so that's not that far from the rec center, I guess.
I heard it, actually, in our house, yeah.
Did you hear them, Steve?
Yeah.
I heard them too.
And I would say that, I mean, we are scheduled to replace two of the batteries in the sirens this year, um, but that's, again, preventative maintenance more than anything, so.
So for people viewing at nighttime, that was a question, oh, what happens at night, we're sleeping, and then we're, you're not-
Well-
gonna hear them at-
Right.
-night or inside?
Yeah, there's a potential that you wouldn't, um, and, I mean, they have weather radios, um, they have, uh, your cellphone, if you have that, if you don't have that silenced that night, that will send you weather alerts as well, so, there's, we're certainly better protected now, uh, nowadays than we were even ten years ago.
And that's what, I guess I was just, wanted you to mention the weather radio option, and then, like you said, your cellphone has alerts too, capability, so.
I do wanna know, I, I got a message this afternoon from Fire Chief Schuman, and I know he had his radio show this week, and he did touch on sirens and too, just, the council's knowledge.
It gets good to have somebody actually check in, like you said, once a year, just to make sure, didn't the county have one that didn't work like a year or two ago, or?
Uh-
There is some-
Yeah, I think, you know, that, that happens from time to time, um, I would say the city of Hutchinson probably has the road, most robust system in the county, um, and probably the most modern system, so, um, there's other areas in the county that aren't as fortunate as us, and, um, so they probably have a little more difficulties.
Thanks for sharing, coming tonight.
Alright.
Anything else, chief?
Uh, I did wanna mention, um, I received an email today, uh, from a gentleman from Beltrami County, who will be in town this weekend on a bicycle, uh, ride.
Yep.
Can't remember the acronym they use, but bicycle around Minnesota or something to that effect, um, so they will be in town this weekend, and his email didn't indicate how many riders they would have, but I think they're-
Three hundred, I think they told me.
Alright, well, I'll let you talk about it once you're through that.
Yeah, the other thing, how's, uh, hands-free deal going?
Oh, uh, thanks for bringing that up, um, very well, actually, I suspected that the, the citizens of Hutchinson would comply, uh, they are very educated people, and we were seeing that that is the case, uh, the State Patrol was in town, um, Thursday of last week, and so, in conjunction with us and the, the county, did a satur, saturation in and around Hutchinson, and I, I don't have the statistics in front of me, um, but by far, we had more seatbelt violations than we did hands-free, um, and actually, each individual that participated, I think, was only able to write one citation for hands-free. So I'll just use our officer, for example, I think he had somewhere in the area of fifteen to eighteen stops during that day, and he had, ended up with one citation for hands-free. So, again, I, I, I think the state did a wonderful job of getting the message out there, um, and it, our agency and other agencies like us have gotten the word out there, so I think.
So people don't have the wrong impression when you say you're only allowed to issue one citation.
No.
Now it's wide open, right?
Well, and, and it's not that they were only allowed to issue one citation, that's the only violation each person found. So it's, it's not like, um, it's like we're cutting them off and everything else had to be a warning, um, and I would just also say that the state, when they implemented the fine schedule for this violation, they kind of built in, uh, a warning of sorts, 'cause the first violation is only a fifty dollar fine versus a hundred and twenty-five, I, is that right, Mike, Mark, a hundred and twenty-five for any subsequent, um, violation, so, um, I mean, fifty bucks is a lot of money, um, but hopefully that would be a good lesson.
Noticed a lot less on the phone.
Yep, absolutely, um, and we, we've been looking, and we have not been finding anything, so, um, I, I'm not surprised, um, but I am pleased, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
You bet.
John, do you have anything else for us?
See your questions?
Fifth Avenue.
Uh, plan is to open from Main Street to the east, um, by Friday, if everything goes right, and then, uh, the subcut and the fill, uh, base work is being done to the west, I see they probably have about a block and a half left of that to the west. Um, and then that, that will, um, proceed from there, so they've, they've started with the sidewalk, um, on the south side, and the base, and they've gotten, like I said, about a block and a half from Lynn Road, so.
John, may I touch on what's going on downtown with the-
Yeah.
Some parking lots?
Sure, downtown, um, city staff is doing a, kind of a, a run-through of all the- Downtown, city staff is doing a kind of a run-through of all the alleys downtown and some of the parking lots. The biggest parking lot that we wanted to work on was Parking Lot E, which is behind Main Street Sports Bar, Dairy Queen, the bigger lot there. Especially, the south side of that was quite a few large cracks and things like that. So, we've got roughly about three, four days' worth of work there that started as early as Monday and will continue this week. Some of the alleys will have, until we can get a patch starting tomorrow, there'll be some bumps in there where we remove some material, and we'll be patching in. So, we hopefully have them marked, cones and paint and different things to try to warn folks, but just be careful when you're motoring around in the alleys and parking lots downtown, so.
I can attest to the one behind the post office.
Yes, yep.
You got to dodge a few there, but...
Right.
How about Frost Boil work?
Frost Boil work, we are closing in on that. I'm hoping to be done with the frost damage by the end of next week.
Just in time for next year's rush.
And I will say, because I know we've had some residents...
Yeah.
...taking us to task, or ignoring that. That's not been the case. We just... It's been difficult getting contractors.
Right. You can't, because, like I tried to warn, you know, even... I knew right away this spring this would be an issue, because we're not alone. Every community around us had the same issues, so... And, you know, some of the folks that have worked in the street department and are now retired, memory goes back many, many years into the 70s, and nobody can remember a year like this with this much damage. And so, it's been extraordinary. Like I said, actually, this working on the parking lots and alleys is the first efforts we've been able to do that were on our list for this year. So, the rest of the work has been responding to those other issues, and some of the larger patches yet to be done are soon. Hopefully, like I said, by the end of next week is the last word I've gotten from both contractors, so.
So, that is... You were truthful when I asked when you were going to do my street next week?
Yep. That's the plan.
Yeah, it's always next week.
Weather permitting.
Yeah. All right. Anything else, John?
Moral.
Just that, I had sent a memo out to Kent and a few folks about the mosquitoes. This was a banner year for mosquitoes, highest trap count we've ever had by a long shot, and we've been doing this many years now. And so, we have been watching trap counts, and we're... The plan is to continue through August 21st to try to cover the, you know, the fair and some of that activity will stop, and then we'll reevaluate as the fall sports get going down at Roberts. There's some options for additional barrier control if we need it there. That happens sometimes, but we're seeing the trap counts go down again. We did have one week out of the... Basically, the whole summer, that was a question, should we pull the trigger or not? And other than that, they've been up where we would tend to want to do a Delta Site. So, that's where we're at. We'll go through the 21st of August, and hopefully, that'll be the end of the Adalte Site application, so.
Great, thanks, John.
You're good.
Tim, you got anything for us?
Yeah, I'm happy that I beat you with my street gear. They just did it last evening, so they were out there almost till dark patching that one, so.
That's not right.
It's taken all year to get through these. No, unfortunately, I don't bring much good news right now. We had an unfortunate incident on Friday. As you remember, maybe four and a half years ago, when I started here, I inherited a plugged force main that necessitated a bypass project where we dug in some piping in order to change that valve out and get that plug remedied. Unfortunately, when we were switching between our two force mains on Friday, we had flow for a little bit, and then it ceased, and we found out, we went into the plant, same place, different valve, different force main, this time a 10-inch valve instead of an 8-inch, plugged where we can't close the valve. We suspect another rag ball. I think most of you have seen the one that we retrieved, and we had to replace that valve. And so, I'm trying to turn a bad situation into a good one by doing some public addressing here and remind people that flushable or not, whether it states it on the package, please don't put anything down the toilet or down the drain into the sanitary sewer that doesn't come out of your body or isn't toilet paper. It just clogs up the systems, and low-flush toilets don't help in the collection system. It doesn't move that stuff, and we don't know why we're seeing these, if our grinders are shredding these things, and they're rolling around, and finally, they rag up, kind of like, you know, when you're spinning yarn or wool into yarn. It's just, when you elongate those fibers, they just tend to tangle up. So, the plan is to, like I said, we had the forethought when we did that project the last time, to put bypasses not only in the one-hats line, lift station line that was plugged, but also the two main force mains. So, we did attempt yesterday to dislodge the rag ball out of there by kind of alternating, pushing and pulling the flow, and thought maybe we loosened it up, but it hasn't budge still. We're going to have to order a valve and get ready to replace it, but at least we have the means in place to be able to drain and hopefully, get that out of there without incidents, so. Like I said, just a reminder for people that those types of things, please don't flush them. Q-tips, toothpicks, dental floss, none of that stuff. It all creates big rags and messes for us, so appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Tim. Mr. Sabora?
Nothing else tonight.
Mary, how about you?
Well, I don't have anything except the fair is going to be here, so go to the fair. Enjoy it. That's it.
Thanks. Dave? Question for John. Are the new lights on South Grade Road and Highway 15, are they going to be with the flashing yellows on them so that they can go through them if it's no traffic coming through?
I'm sorry I can't answer that question, but I'll find out for you.
Well, it wasn't... Couple of people have asked me if we're... Why don't we have the flashing arrows?
Sure.
The cautionary arrows? And I said, well, you know, don't ask me, ask John. But apparently, they didn't ask you.
I will find out and let you know.
But just a question from the public is, are we going to have cautionary arrows?
Sure.
And you don't know the answer to that?
I don't right now, no.
Okay.
So, I'll find out and let you know.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. That it, Dave?
Yep.
Thanks. Steve?
A while ago, we talked about Baco 21 and Minnesota, and the council wasn't in favor of looking into that. I guess, just with more that's been going on with that, I just wanted to ask, you know, is there any desire to reconsider that? And if not, would you mind if we had staff ask the county? I don't know if we have to have a resolution, but ask the county to do it, look at it. This map that I handed out is from Clearway, Minnesota, and there's a big push lately, or a lot of the movement's been through counties adopting it. First one was Otter Tail County in November of 18, and Pope County did it in December of 18. Then, all this year, Beltrami, Isanti, Olmsted, Wilken, Benton, Stevens have done it, and I read where Wright County is going to be looking at it in September. So, I think it helps address some of the concerns of, you know, one business in our county versus others. Sure, you can go to neighboring counties, but I think it just helps push, hopefully pushes the state to look at it. And we've got another session coming up, and if more counties, more communities do it, then it's just more of a push for the state to actually finally do it, too. Any thoughts on that?
I guess I just figured that I'd wait till the state does it, because as a business owner, I don't want to take any, you know... I mean, I understand that, you know, smoking is a problem. I think vaping is a bigger problem, but I just think that probably just wait till the state does it, so it's statewide. That's my feelings.
So, would it be okay again to ask the county to do it, or you don't even want to do that?
I wouldn't be in favor of asking the county. I think that, you know, just let the state do it.
We just leave the state do it.
Again, that's how it all got started, even with the restaurant smoking, was the localities led the way, so. Anyway, just thought I'd ask. Thanks.
Anything else, Steve?
Nope.
Chad?
I don't have anything else.
Mr. Yannick?
Just one thing to note. I did send some stuff out last week regarding this on kind of social media, but our National Community Survey does have an opt-in version to it. This year, they do the last two weeks, but that survey is open. So, we have a link on the front page of our website, and then there's a link on our social media page. So, if you did not receive the mail copy of the National Community Survey, you can go on and opt-in and fill out that survey. I will say, if you did receive the mail copy, you did fill that out, you don't need to worry about it. And if you did get the mail copy and haven't filled it out, fill that one out, send it in, so. But that's something that's new that they've implemented to do the last two weeks of that survey, so that's available to the public. That's it.
Have we gotten many surveys back, Matt?
Last time I had an update was, I think, a week or two ago, two weeks ago. I think we had 470-some responses, which is good. I mean, the last time we did the survey, we were in the higher end, and we had like 40% response rate, so. Like I said, I would encourage everyone to fill it out. I mean, that's... We use that data to make decisions. One thing I will note, too, that I didn't share, is that our company has served with or has partnered on the National Citizens Survey, has partnered with a company now that do up-to-date. So, we talked about, you know, more follow-up, where there's a program that we can register with where we can do, you know, weekly surveys, monthly surveys. We can pinpoint sections of town, and I'm going to look to partner with that. That's really in coordination with this, but allows us... As you've talked about, Steve, okay, when we get some responses back, then what? Well, here's another app that some people can to bring that on board with the city as we... Next year. That's it, otherwise.
All right, thanks, Matt. Mary mentioned the fair, and had the survey to talk about, and Matt took care of that. So, Chief, I don't know. I did talk to the guys about the bikes, and maybe, Steve, you can help out. Do you know which... What route they're taking in the town? I know they're coming from Spicer, I guess. So, have they said about a route or something? But I just want people to... There's going to be a lot of bikes in town, so, or on the highway.
Yeah, one more one here, and I'll see if I can access it quick.
Yeah. I just want people to realize that there's going to be... Well, they said 300, right, Steve, or something like that, or?
Yeah, I've... Let's see.
We should have warned Dan.
Well, he knew about it, because they actually called me about three months ago and asked me what was close. I told him the brewery was in crawling distance of the rec center, so.
Because that's what they're all staying at. They're all staying at the rec center, right?
Yeah, they are staying at the rec center.
That's their stop point.
Correct.
Okay. So, Hutchinson has involvement, day three, day four. So, they'll be coming into town on day three. Looks like they will be coming in on Tagus Avenue, and then Golf Course Road to School Road, south to South Grade, and then to the rec center. And then, when they depart, I think they essentially take the same route out of town, and then head north, I believe, to... I think it might be Recoree or somewhere up there. Let me see if I can find that one here. If I can figure out how to operate my phone. Yeah, so they leave town, they leave on Harrington to Lewis, and then School Road, back north out of town onto Tagus, and then their destination would be St. Joseph.
Great. Thank you. Otherwise, that's all I have.
May I interject one more thing?
Yes.
Mary mentioned the county fair, and I think people need to pay attention to the four-way stop at Century Avenue going into Fairgrounds. You've got to be a little bit careful, and I've seen people go through it like it wasn't even there, and that's just in the last day that it's been up. And I had a... Another guy tell me he'd come out to the stop sign, was going to make a left-hand turn going east and on Century, and he said four cars went through the stop sign. And that was during Orange Spectacular. They went through the stop sign, four of them in a row. He said, I don't know what they were looking at, but he said it sure wasn't a stop sign, so. I just so everybody's kind of aware of that. I think it's important, we don't need any accidents in town on that corner and that for the fair, maybe hurting somebody or whatever the case may be, but keep your eyes open.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.